Chair Targ?
Present.
Commissioners Golden?
Me too.
Commissar Croftsill?
I'm here.
Commissioner Krasinski?
Here.
And Commissioner Brothers is out, is out ill today. You have a, you have a quorum.
Excellent. We wish her well and hope that she disconnects from the world. Don't we all?
Oh, yes. Me too, friends.
All right. I'm ready. Everybody did? Sorry. Excellent. Before we get to the agenda, it's now time for members of the public forward or to raise unagendized matters. Do we have any unagendized matters? Going to start first with the old schoolhouse being non. I'm going to ask if we have any online.
We do.
Yeah, we can please engage them.
A phone number ending seven, five, six, two.
Thank you so much, Caroline Bertongan. What did you guys do? You, it's a miracle because we couldn't have it work yesterday. We couldn't make it work this morning. Now suddenly we have clear sound. So did you follow up and did you change the router? Or how come we have internet connection now?
I'll answer if you want, Mr. Chair.
Well, it's.
There was a broken part that we were able to, we were able to get a previously replaced one and get it configured properly, and so it's working. Knock on wood.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
The age of miracles is upon us. We have two primary matters before us. We have an abbreviated commission and staff reports, and then we'll have minutes. But getting to the first two items, we have public hearing to conduct the review of an application for the exception to the town's utility underground requirement at 243 Corder Madera Road. Do we have a staff report on the same?
Yes, Jamie will be providing a staff report.
Just one moment, please. I will be providing a presentation. The staff report has been provided. Have you had a chance to see the staff report?
Appreciate the clarification.
Okay, great. Just one moment, and I will be presenting. I just want to get this up. Thank you.
Jamie, you are on mute. You're still on mute. First letter is. Okay.
Sorry. Okay, I am unmuted, but I need to share the screen and I will need to. I'm sorry. Put this on slideshow is what I'm trying to do here. It's like giving me a hard time.
It's at the bottom of the screen.
My slideshow?
No, 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 just slide it over a little bit to.
Oh, let's see, this, this should work. Is that, does that work?
Perfect.
Okay, good. I'm sorry about that. Well, good evening, everyone. Apologies for my technical difficulties there. Tonight, I will be sharing with you the item for an exception request to the town's requirements to underground utilities at 243 Corder Madera Road. The subject property is bound by Corder Madera, road to the west and Seema Way to the south. 243 Corder Madera is located in zoning district fifteen, R dash E fifteen M, and is surrounded by one and two-story homes. A building permit was issued for, on April 17th, 2024, in a revision to the approved plans on August 5th, 2024, to remodel interior space within the existing residence. That includes new appliances and light fixtures. There is exterior hardscape that is also now approved. Changes that include covered porches, exterior lighting, a new water heater and a new furnace. The applicant also indicates that there is a new air conditioner proposed, although specific information has not been provided to planning to confirm whether the AC unit is part of the current permit or a deferred submittal. The combination of the proposed improvements require an electrical panel upgrade from 100 amps to 200 amps. Just one minute. Sorry about that. The electrical service upgrade triggers the town code requirement that overhead service onsite be relocated to underground, to an underground trench as listed in PBMC 13.0, 13.36.010, based on a service increase that I've mentioned is greater than 100 amps. The town's municipal code allows an exception to be requested if the planning commission determines the requirement is not feasible or practicable, and there's no reasonable alternative location or design for installation. The electrical service, the existing, sorry, main utility pole is located on the western side of Corder Madera Road. There are approximately eight transmission lines that extend from that main utility pole easterly along Seema Way that connect to a pole near the driveway to the residence carport, which from that pole, there's a 50-foot drop line that connects to the residence, electrical, the existing electrical box at the, near the southeast corner of the residence. The existing main utility pole serves residences throughout the neighborhood, and the utility line travels approximately 193 feet along Seema Way and includes an addition, that additional 50-foot drop line that I mentioned. The applicant maintains that the utility underground requirement is not feasible or practicable on the following basis. There's a tree cluster that is located at the southeast corner that would be impacted as a result, which would be an additional cost. I did not receive an arborist report. Since that's also additional, an additional cost indicating exactly that 12-inch tree cluster information. There's also a PG&E backlog that is greater than a year, and the costs associated with a rental before completion would cause an undue hardship for the homeowners. There are also applicant maintenance that'd be minimal safety and visual benefits as a result of undergrounding one set of utility lines, since the majority of electrical lines in the community are above ground. And also the costs associated with the undergrounding requirement in combination with these factors mentioned would create an undue hardship for the homeowners, and that a community effort approach would be a more considerable approach for future undergrounding as a potential strategy. And this was the information provided by the applicant. This, just one moment. Historically, previous exceptions have been granted by the planning commission in accordance with the town code. However, the planning commission has the authority to grant an exception to the requirement to underground utilities if they determine that the installation is not feasible and practicable, and there's no reasonable alternative location or design for installation identified for the underground lines. Historically, however, the planning commission has granted previous exceptions based on the high cost relative to valuation size of the project, adverse impacts on trees, complications due to topography of the property, and adverse impacts to underground utilities. So those are just several examples. In advance of the meeting, public noticing was mailed to all the property owners within a 300-foot radius on the site November 22nd, 2024. A public comment was received today from the homeowner, a homeowner at 120 Crescent Avenue and forwarded to the planning commissioners. The comment relates to the town's overall intent and plan to underground utilities as listed in the municipal code, Chapter 13.08, Public Utility Districts. And we can discuss that further if the commission would like to. And also, we do have the applicant and one of the homeowners here at the meeting, I do believe, who can also speak on behalf of the proposal, the exception. Just one moment. Based on staff's overall analysis and the information provided by the applicant, the costs associated with undergrounding, the tree impacts, and the costs associated with required rental fees, which specifics, you know, were not provided, but the staff was able to make the finding to be made that the high-cost category would, of determination could be made. Therefore, staff has recommends granting an exception to the undergrounding requirements with a recommendation that the planning commission make a motion to approve the request for the exception to under, to undergrounding utilities. I'm happy to answer questions, and more specific questions as necessary, and hope that the applicant and/or homeowner can also speak on behalf as necessary prior to questions from the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we move to the applicant, are there questions, staff?
No questions could be.
My questions could be now of staff or after the applicant? Could it be both?
No. I'd only note that we've, every term or so, we come across a, an undergrounding issue such as this. And each time that we do, we've made a recommendation that the issue be reviewed by council or directed to back to us. I would only renew that request. There may be enough on the town's docket such that it didn't make sense this past session. But given that, I'd ask that we not revisit the need to, to amend, to expand, but deal with it on the, on the terms that we have before us. Carter, you are here for the applicant.
I'm here for the applicant. All right. Thank you so much for, for having us. This again, you know, is very similar, you know, to the other undergrounding exceptions that, you know, we've applied for over the years, you know, principally around small projects. Philosophically, all of us, you know, support the undergrounding concept associated with the ordinance, you know, is to gradually get the town undergrounded. The issue in this situation and principally in this neighborhood, you know, is the vast amount of, you know, above-ground wires and the likely, the low likelihood, you know, over the next 30, 35 to 100 years, you know, will be, ever be undergrounded. You know, as part of my communications to the town, you know, I actually did an estimate based on the progress that's been made in the last 35 years since I moved to Portola Valley. And, you know, it looks like it would take a very, very long time. The, the cost associated with this and the complexity in, in, in the case of dealing with, you know, PG&E underground, you know, has become really a problem. I look forward to you, you know, any questions you have and, you know, motion to approve.
Before you sit down, are there questions of either the applicant or staff?
Yeah, I didn't see, what's the total cost of the project? So I can compare the undergrounding to that?
It's probably in the, you know, $700,000 range.
And I heard this staff member talk about, and I read about this, the 12-inch tree cluster, the cluster of trees add up to 12 inches? Or each tree is 12 inches and there's a bunch of them?
No, it's, it's, it's just kind of a messy bunch of things. You know, it's a, when the surveyor did it, you know, there, there wasn't any identifiable, you know, actual trunk. It's, it's a really a multi-trunked, large shrub.
Because 12-inch doesn't sound that big to me. Like, yeah, just dig through that. But that's what it is. I mean, did I hear it right? Did I understand it right? It's a 12-inch? Okay. And can anybody talk to me about this PG&E delay? Is it like they've just gone into a bad phase right now, or?
This has been an ongoing problem for, you know, really most of my career. You know, and particularly, you know, since the fires, you know, of the last, you know, 10 years. PG&E's, you know, response, you know, to applications for service, even for new buildings, you know, is taking years. We're still waiting, you know, for our service at Willow Commons. And that application has been in for, you know, over two years. And we're still fighting to get, you know, them to just put the wire inside the pipe. You know, it, it, it ends up being costly. You know, there's extraordinary delays, and it, it ends up, you know, costing a lot in other, you know, kind of collateral issues. You know, in this case, the, the big thing, you know, that really pushes us, you know, to this point. You know, Jamie, if you could go back to the picture?
Just one moment.
But, you know, in the picture, there are dozens and dozens of wires, you know, that would end up needing to be, you know, undergrounded in order to make any, you know, marginal change, you know, in, in the neighborhood. The only undergrounding that's happened since I've been in Portola Valley during the last 35 years, you know, is from, you know, Willow Brook, you know, to Stonegate. And that, that happened, you know, more than 25 years ago. You know, there, there is a fund, but none of those, none of those funds are being used at this time, you know, to underground any parts of the town. So the likelihood is really part of what we're dealing with. I think that, you know, you're, you're accurate to, to question, you know, the issues related, you know, to the actual language in the ordinance. But I think that, you know, as, as Chair Targ, you know, suggested, there are, you know, issues that, you know, should, should be corrected in the way that the ordinance is written.
Let me go back to my question about the PG&E delay. It's a generic delay with PG&E, not specific to undergrounding. Anything you want from PG&E takes this kind of time, or?
No.
Undergrounding takes.
An overground, an overhead service you can get in about seven days.
I see. Why is the Willow Commons so delayed?
Because it's undergrounded.
I see. Everything undergrounded takes this kind of time. I did have the, I don't know, Terrence, if you are going to know this. We do have requests for exceptions, but there are other people that build ADUs and stuff, and the ordinance says they have to put it underground. And they do, right? There are plenty of projects, or I'm asking, this is a question. Plenty of projects that do end up undergrounding the wires from the street to their house because of this ordinance.
Yes, it's really a question of the distance. When, when there's an extraordinarily long distance and crossing a roadway, it's much more expensive.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Ask about that? With the ADU example, would that, I mean, the house is already getting power, I guess. And so would an ADU usually be undergrounding, like just within the property or coming from the service?
Jamie, do you have any answer? Do you have any, can you address that?
That's a great question. The trenching that was provided, I believe it included the, actually, the 193 feet.
Jamie, I think I can.
Thank you, Brandon. Actually, I think it did, it's just the drop line, the transmission line. But Brandon, go ahead, please, because Brandon has expertise about the undergrounding. So thank you.
So there is quite a lot of issues with the undergrounding. For ADUs in particular, it depends. Some ADUs can have it just run off of the existing panel from the home. Other ADUs, the homeowner may choose to have their own dedicated service for that ADU, which then they would need to run the line. So it is dependent on what they're proposing and whether they're opting to run a dedicated line or not. And then kind of going back to the PG&E delays, that is kind of a, a, Bay Area-wide. There's been some actions in some other jurisdictions. San Carlos, for example, exempted all single-family homes from undergrounding because of the delays that, that PG&E is just seven months at a minimum is kind of what they're kind of telling people. But I've dealt with other projects that are 14 months to, you know, two years going on that they haven't undergrounded.
Thank you. That's helpful. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Brandon.
Anne already covered my questions.
No questions.
I'm sorry, Carter?
He has to think for a while. He's a lawyer, you know, take, got to frame the question just right.
You're framing the answer for him. How do I, how do I deal, deal with the issue of costs, feasibility, practicability? Practicability is going to be more straightforward.
I, I think.
What are my options?
I, I think in this case, and actually in almost every case, you know, that I've brought, you know, exceptions, it really has come down to, what's the likelihood, you know, that this undergrounding would have, you know, any marginal effect, you know, on the future of the undergrounding of the neighborhood? And that's why I think there's a larger question. But since.
I don't, I don't get to, that's not.
I understand.
That's, that's not a box I get to check.
Well, I think it is because the planning commission, you know, has the authority, you know, and the responsibility, you know, to provide the moral background, you know, moral backbone, you know, to do the right thing for the town, you know, even in spite of, you know, the poorly written rules.
I appreciate the, the, the vote of confidence for the moral backbone. But I'm, I, 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 I understand the rules as, as they are. They may be drifting into discussion. Right. Carter, thank you very much. Are there members of the public who are opening the hearing? Are there members of the public who would like to speak on this issue? Either within the schoolhouse or online? And I'm going to invite.
Do you have two, you do have two people at the moment that are raising their hand to speak?
Hi, thank you very much. This is Rita, and I just want to say that I didn't see my comment included. I had sent a message on November 23rd when I saw this, the advertisement for this in the local paper. I do not know the applicant, but the, the town was going to be looking into undergrounding and forming some policy for exceptions. And the last time this came up, you know, everything had to be stopped and, and really looked into the exceptions. And, and there was supposed to be some report from the planning commission. So I don't know if this was ever done, but I, I've just sent that message on November 23rd when I saw that because it's, it's as if those conversations never happened. And some of the people on the dais, you know, you spent time away from your families working on that particular issue. I don't know if the applicant was aware that there was some policy, some updated policy for exceptions for undergrounding that was being done, or if that report was ever done. My request on November 23rd is for, you know, for someone to let me know where I can find that and if the applicant had received it. So if, if someone can answer, is there an updated policy? Because in the last two times that this issue has come up, planning commission was going to be looking at it and writing up a, a new policy concerning exceptions to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get to that, to the answer in just a moment. But take the next, next speaker, please. We have next speaker.
There we go. We got you.
I, I submitted my comments this morning to, to Hymie. I don't know that if you guys got a chance to read it or not, but I want to see that in a bigger picture. And that is that right now, our, our first focus should be on the climate change and global warming. And for that, we need to, as it is policy, as the town of Portola Valley, it is encouraging that to convert everything to electricity rather than burning gas. So for that, the town of Portola Valley should facilitate for homeowners that they want to do that rather than making it difficult. Let's look at this picture. This law, this, the regulation which was written 43 years ago was for the beauty of the town of Portola Valley. But beauty is good, but is climate change more important or the beauty of the, of the, of, of the town? That's one look at it. The other look at it is this that this, this law has been there for 43 years. And how many streets they have gone totally underground? And for going underground, it needs to a coordinated work between the town of Portola Valley, between all of the homeowners in that street, and the PG&E. That is the practical way of doing that. Otherwise, it is just a, you know, everybody wants come and says that, oh, I need the exception. This, this, this regulation, from my point of view, it is obsolete. And, and as Carter said, that the commission needs to somehow to do something about that and rewrite that for today's world, which the climate change is much more important than the beauty. That's it.
Well said. Are there members of the public in the old schoolhouse who would like to speak on the issue?
There's, there are no more online entries.
In that case, let's close the hearing and bring it back for discussion.
You're looking at me? I, I don't have very much to say. I, the staff's recommendation makes sense to me. I think that undergrounding in this case would not provide much benefit. And I think we do have enough evidence to find that it's not feasible or practicable based on the costs and delays to the project and lack of benefit.
Yeah, we've all struggled with this ordinance. And I think the, I see why the idea is there. If somebody's doing a big project and. If somebody's doing a big project and you could just put, we all know it's just the lines from the road to the house, right? That's only one part of the electrical lines. We're not, this has nothing to do with putting the line that goes down the street underground, which we all would want. But I think it does end up being an awful lot of hardship. I'm most persuaded by the delay in PG&E. Um, the cost doesn't seem that bad compared to the total project and the, uh, tree cluster doesn't sound so dramatic, but having a one-year delay and uncertainty seems like hardship. So I'm leaning towards making yet another exception.
I have a contrary point of view. I am sympathetic to the discussion about is the law, is our musical code, is it outdated and does it need to be looked at again? That's a decision that the town council has to make. Uh, we can, we can send up our thoughts on that decision if they're going to not to have us look at it. You know, give it a comprehensive view, really more the town council. In the previous exceptions that we've made, the dollar amount on a relative base. Sticks in my mind was solar, solar installation. Charger for electric car. Uh, and the cost of the undergrounding was as much as that. So we're something like doubling the cost. That struck me as being too much. In this case, I think we're talking about a relatively small percentage of the project. Which in my mind is probably what would be intentional when the code was written. I do find the argument that, that because no one else has done it so far, therefore we shouldn't do it. Feels like everybody who's first on the street is going to be in that boat. And therefore, if we were to say that's a good reason not to do it, we're basically killing the laws, killing, killing the code, which I, again, I don't think is our role. Um, the PG&E delay, yep, it's a problem, but it's, as people have said, it's, it's not a new thing. Not specific to this project. This has been going on for three years. I think I spent almost twenty years ago, probably nine months getting PG&E undergrounded around my house on Corte Madera. So again, that comes down to, it's a problem. I agree it's a problem. But is it unique to this case? Or is it something that should be accounted for, given that that's standard with PG&E these days? So I mean, I think it falls into the category. We've got several other things that have to be generally both cleanup that have come up over the time. Grading is one, uh, gray water regulations are another, that we're wondering they may be outdated. But I, I come back to the first thing is I don't think it's our job on the planning commission to decide to basically set a precedent that then says we don't need any more undergrounds. We're going to have to keep the exception moving forward. So I would not approve this thing.
Thank you. Returning for a moment to Rita's question of, uh, where, where is, where is the report that was going to be produced? And the answer is there is not a report to my knowledge. The recommendation was made to council that this be an issue that they ask us to study. It's not, it's like John was saying, it's not a role to revise or to rewrite ordinances with that direction uh, from council. Uh, we only reiterate if I may, on behalf of, uh, of this commission, uh, the further suggestion that we have previously made to council. I am sympathetic to the idea that, um, that this may be an outmoded, uh, or circumstances may have changed in a variety of ways that, uh, were the language, uh, different, we might more easily come to a different conclusion. In addition to issues of climate change, there are issues of fire. And that plays into above-ground and below-ground wiring as well. It's beyond my expertise here, uh, to have an opinion. Uh, I am sympathetic to the, uh, issue of waiting a speculative amount of time, but not, uh, in the least, uh, seven months or potentially longer. Uh, and I do believe that that is an unreasonable hardship, uh, under the circumstances. And again, I think that if council wanted to, uh, provide some direction as to where we might go, that would be appreciated. But failing that, I think that we do have the authority to, uh, make these kinds of decisions in light of both the expense, forty K out of seventy is, and you're better at this than I. When you get your lawyer doing math, you know, watch out.
Let's make it thirty-five K, then five, five percent.
It's like five percent. And then if you look at a year delay on seven hundred thousand, so seventy K. So all of a sudden, you're, now you're getting funny enough. But it, it starts to, it starts to be, uh, more, more significant on a, on a financial basis alone. So I wouldn't have a problem making a, a decision that under the circumstances, there's an issue of if on the basis of delay and the implied cost. I am sympathetic to the, to, to the rule of law and to consistency. And to, to potential precedent as well.
When you were talking about the cost, I couldn't quite follow, but either of you, are you, are you including the cost of rent? Due to the impact of the delay?
Yeah, that's.
So that's what you were saying? Okay.
So basically, it's giving me ten percent interest rate.
On the. No, I mean that they can't live in their house. They have to rent another house because they can't occupy their house during this.
I wasn't thinking that. To me, this cost is low. I would not approve this if we were talking about the cost. I was not going into rent. I was just looking at seven hundred thousand versus, and then you tack on another, we call it thirty-five. I saw both twenty-five and forty in here. If they wanted to make that case, that's their business. They could tell us.
They, they did. They, they did. And I mean, they didn't specify the, the cost, but they did say, or maybe the staff said this, uh, it says homeowners to continue to pay rental fees by extending.
The applicant is presently out of the house then.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, so this is an extended period of time. Or this is uncomplicated for me.
I, I don't, I don't think you can contribute at all to PG&E, but, but yes, I know. How much?
Uh, I, 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 I would ask you if there's a motion.
I would move to, uh, adopt the resolution in the packet.
Is there a second?
I second.
I did.
You've just made a motion.
Just, uh, the recommendation on this item is it mentioned two, two motions and I just don't know. I covered it.
Um, you can make the motions together if, 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 if a motion maker intended to make the motion to, um, find the project category exempt pursuant to CEQA fifteen, three oh one, existing facilities, class one of the CEQA guidelines, and to move approval of the requested exception to the utility undergrounding requirements. And you could, you could take a vote on those items together.
Yes, that's what I intended to move, and I do move that.
And I second, I, I meant to second that too.
Uh, all in favor? Uh, actually, she's done a little.
Sure. Um, Chair Tarr.
Hi.
Commissioner Brothers is absent. Um, Commissioner Golden.
Day.
Commissioner Croftill.
Aye.
Commissioner Krasinski.
Yes.
The motion passes three to, three to one. The motions pass three to one.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jamie. Uh, we have the next item that's before us. Which I will be up in just a second through my screen. And this is a, uh, a matter to consider, the recommendation that the town council, uh, approved the amendment to the conservation easement and declaration of restriction and covenants for the property located at eighty-eighty West Ridge to, my recollection is maybe novel in the time that it's been on the commission. It should be interesting. Do we have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Chair. Uh, Brandon Delikas with the presentation this evening. So this is a unique, uh, situation. So for some background, um, December of two thousand and six, the town council um, did adopt a resolution that approved a conservation easement and, uh, data restrictions and covenants, uh, between Bill and, uh, Jean Lane and the town. Um, and the purpose of that conservation easement was to ensure the property at eighty-eighty West Ridge uh, would be retained, uh, predominantly in its current, um, kind of state. Its natural scenic and open space, uh, open space condition. And to kind of prevent any use of that property that was significantly impair or interfere with the conservation of value. And so this is a unique situation. Normally, conservation easements are going to be over a portion of a land. And generally, it's undeveloped land. This conservation easement is across the entire property, which was formerly three parcels. Uh, they combined it, uh, through the planning commission, um, into one parcel, and then they have the existing house. The conservation easement did kind of, um, suggest that there was probably going to be some redevelopment of the main house, kind of the lane's, um, home. And so it, uh, did have some limitations, um, which include, you know, the total square footage of all structures on the property not exceeding eleven thousand one hundred and eighty-nine square feet. Structures had to be a single-story in height. As well as, you know, not having any non-native plants, um, concerns on grading and and also material changes to the topography of the property. And reading through and kind of understanding the lanes, kind of what they've discussed. They were, with this being originally three lots, that means that could have been three houses with three driveways, with three infrastructures that really would impact that lot, and they didn't want that. So through this and putting it in this conservation easement, that, that's what they were trying to do, is limit that. Um, but, you know, a single-family house that they had lived in, um, and they had recreational uses around the property, including a barn and stable. Um, during the ASCC commission meeting, um, that I'll discuss in a moment, you know, one of the daughters spoke and spoke how, you know, they used to have little race cars that they drove over what uh, is referred to as Lot one oh one, which is the, kind of the empty open space lot. And, and kind of, you know, the recreation that they did. So a project, uh, next slide please. So on October, uh, twenty-eighth of this year, ASCC did hold a public hearing and conducted a review of the application. Um, and that included the architectural review for a new single-family story residence. Um, single-story, single-family residence with an attached garage. Uh, it did have an internal ADU, however, that was not subject to the review, uh, under state law. Um, there is an attached garage, new recreation areas, which included a new pool. Um, they're proposing tennis and pickleball courts. There's also new landscaping improvements that include the trails, walking paths, patio and a front gate entry feature. The ASCC in reviewing, um, did have some concerns with the tr- the proposed trails and the, uh, courts, as the language of the conservation easement seemed to be ambiguous and kind of conflict with necessarily the intent. Um, you know, the proposed trails, um, are similar to that of trails in nature preserves. They're not meant to be impactful to the open, you know, space, the scenic kind of qualities. And so one of the modifications is that in specifying kind of the limitations on that. The other one was to kind of further clarify, you know, the intent with regards to the developed and undeveloped portions of the lot. Um, the proposed courts are located within what used to be the stable and riding um, areas, which are developed land. They were graded and developed in order to facilitate those uses. While there is some minor grading, it doesn't modify the overall topography of the entire site. So the commission did end up approving the project with modified conditions of approval. Um, and one of those such conditions was to, uh, the applicant needed to propose an amendment to the conservation easement, kind of clarifying the intent in, in regards to kind of the trails and then also the grading related, um, to the, uh, courts and kind of allowing for those new recreational uses, um, on that site. So just kind of going overview, um, the vicinity map. So here is eighty-eighty West Ridge with, uh, West Ridge kind of there on the north. Yep, Pion there on the kind of left side, and then Voya there, uh, further up. Next slide please. So these are just kind of more for reference, so you can kind of see the project that was proposed and approved. And, uh, to clarify, the ASCC approval, um, does not come to the commission. It was not appealed. So the only part of this item before you tonight is the amendment to the conservation easement, nothing that the ASCC approved. Uh, since that is done and since no appeals were filed during that time, it is a concluded action. Next slide please. So this is kind of just an overall site plan. We have the main home, the pool, along with the tree. Next slide please. And then here is those proposed, uh, recreation courts. So we have the tennis court, which is a clay court, and then a pickleball court, which is, um, going to be an asphalt court. Next slide please. And then this is that lot, um, which is considered Lot one oh one, that's referenced throughout the document. That is kind of that undeveloped portion of the property. Next slide please. The proposed trails. So there are three portions to this trail. You have the, uh, so-called loop trail there in green that kind of comes out from the, uh, house that kind of goes up towards the north of the property around what will be an ADU along with, uh, the courts, kind of loops up and around and comes back. The spur trail is in blue. That is a trail that is running from the pool area over onto Lot one oh one to a oak tree that is kind of within that, the meadow area of Lot one oh one. And then we have the perimeter trail, which kind of sticks to the developed area directly around the main residence and kind of connecting the loop trail and the spur trail. Next slide please. So the proposed language, um, is here in front of you. So for section, uh, four point one point three, which specifies what can be developed on this property. Um, the, the attorneys added this language to explicitly allow tho- those trails. But they did add in that the two-inch, uh, layer of fifty-fifty blend. And again, that's to try to make sure that those trails are not, they're not asphalt trails, they're not concrete trails. They're, again, similar to the trails that you would find in nature preserves, um, all throughout this country. Next slide please. And then also amending section four point three to allow for recreational uses. And others to engage in those recreation uses that require no surface alteration or development. and others to engage in those recreation uses that require no surface alteration or development of previously undeveloped portions of the land. So again, where the barn is, that was previously developed. That terrain was already altered, but this would stop any new recreational uses from being added to Lot 101, kind of that open space, which is so focused on, when you read the kind of the baseline reports and kind of the background. Next slide please. We did receive three public comments for this item, which was provided to the commission. These are comments and issues that were before the planning, or I'm sorry, ASCC as well in the concerns, again, with kind of conflicting with the conservation easement and kind of the but those have been provided. Next slide. And at this point, staff is available for questions.
So the conservation easement seems to be fairly general, but the amendments proposed seem to be very specific to the planned trails. And so I was wondering if you could just comment on why that's the strategy, rather than trying to make it like generally allowing trails or something along those lines?
I think it's, being specific in this case is trying to keep with the intent and not allow somebody to come in and just propose trails all over the place. You know, if now, let's say you had five or six trails across Lot 101, that might actually have an impact. That's, you know, it's kind of cumulative. Whereas being very specific and allowing this specific proposal for the trails is to address that, and we're ensuring the rest of the lot is preserved in kind of that natural and open space characteristic that it has now. So that was kind of our intent and why we decided, the attorneys decided to be more specific in this case.
And when you reference the attorneys, are those, whose attorneys are them?
So the town does have separate counsel for this project that reviewed this amendment and worked with the applicant's attorney to craft the language for this proposed amendment.
Who is that attorney, if I may ask?
The town's attorney is Val, I always forget, yeah, Valerie, I can't say her last name.
Armento?
Ariane.
Is the town attorney, the town's, the town attorney, our typical attorney is conflicted out on this on this project. So we have a contract attorney, and she's been working on this project throughout, throughout. So and she is, she is on line if you have questions for her.
Okay.
Can I follow up? I had the same question. This does feel so specific, like it's going to get out of date in 10 years. You know, if somebody wanted to put, or there was some new regulation, they wanted to put half inch instead of three-eighths inch crust, they'd be out of compliance, right? I'm just really surprised it's this detailed with the engineer, you know, the engineering specifications.
Again, the intent is, and I mean, yes, those standards would change, the project would be granted under the current ones, and the trails would be developed under the current standards. But again, it is, that is kind of the current best practices. And it could go out of, you know, out of compliance in a few year or in 10 years. But, you know, the idea is these trails would be, you know, put in and maintained for the life of the home. And then, you know, let's say that home, they decide in 30, 40 years to redevelop that home. Well, again, the town and the property owner can always amend the conservation easement as needed, again, as long as it's consistent with the original intent. And staff feels that this amendment is.
Regarding the public comments, there was one dealing with the, so I think you alluded to this in your presentation, but so there was one public comment alluding to the impervious surface calculations used during the ASCC approval. And I guess, could you maybe reconfirm that that issue is not something that we could really factor into our decision tonight?
Yeah, so, and there's some so impervious surface, the town defines impervious surface a little differently than really anybody else would or an engineer would. We include items that aren't normally included, but we also exclude items that are normally included. And so that's town-specific regulations. For example, a riding corral does count as impervious surface for the town, even if it is a sand base. That was a decision that the council made at the time they adopted that ordinance, that that should count as impervious surface. And so the, you know, the public comment is kind of focused on that. They they are under the argument that that should not be included as impervious surface. But per town precedent and also our code, that is. And so, you know, we did ask the ASCC, you know, the baseline report kind of says, here's everything that's on the site. And in ways, it did kind of grandfather certain things in, especially when the planning commission issued a use permit for the site. Particularly, you know, the building size, that the 11,000 is technically larger than what would be allowed under our code. But that was handled, and that's considered part of the baseline. In this case, looking at the baseline report, they added up the impervious surface that's consistent with our town code and in the baseline reports, and came up with that number, that 29,000. The commission decided that since the applicant is significantly reducing it from 29,000 to about 21,000, 22,000, that that's acceptable, because it is less than what was originally there. And again, that is keeping with the intent of the conservation easement itself, because it's actually becoming less impactful to kind of the natural environment.
Brendan, let me just, I think I understood the question slightly differently. And I'll address it. What is before you is just the change in the conservation easement. So we're giving, we're giving you background on the ASCC consideration, but what is before you tonight and all you can discuss and take action on is the recommendation of the conservation easement. So again, so wanted to provide you some background, but wanted to make it clear, that's what you're deliberating on.
Thanks. I do appreciate the background. I think that's all my questions right now.
Ronnie covered my two questions.
The purposes of the of the easement, the variety that are discussed in the recitals provides that the purpose of the conservation easement is to assure the property will be retained perpetually predominantly in its current natural scenic and open space condition, and to prevent the use of the property that will significantly impair with the conservation values of property. What are conservation values?
That's one of those things that the easement did not go into much detail about. And so it would be the conservation values of the town at the time. It could be, it's a bit ambiguous, and I don't know if Terrence or Val kind of want to explain a bit more on those.
And we look to the general plan, for example, for what are conservation values?
It informs the term, but it doesn't define it directly. So a conservation value is, and Valerie's going to correct me if I'm wrong, but it's really just a plain understanding of what what conservation value, what conservation is, and the, again, the concept, looking back at the original intent, which was to have one house on three large, on three large lots, rather than to sort of stack up the houses as much as possible. So that's what the intent of the conservation easement was, was to create a, create a larger lot setting where the, where the, where the single, where the single home was set in an open area.
So I think of, I mean, where it becomes important for me is in the interpretation section of the easement, where we're to interpret the easement in a manner that effectuates the purpose of the easement. And I'm interested in maintaining fidelity. So if I think of a conservation easement in the term of conserving, rather than an open space value, I might come up with a different way of thinking about the issue. The problem that I have in the recitals is it talks about the values that the town is promoting, which also includes open space and social. So the question of what is my, what is my, what is the easement's purpose? Is the genesis of my question beyond that. I think that we get discussion. Do we have, we're going to open a the public hearing at this point, unless there are, staff has a point.
Sorry, to clarify, so this is not a public hearing item. However, you may take public comment on this item.
Absolutely. You're right. We have a, we have a resolution here. We should take public comment. Appreciate the clarification.
Traditionally, the applicant speaks first.
John, if you are on the Zoom call, please raise your hand, and we will promote you up. Okay, perfect.
Use the mic for your own recording.
You turn on.
So this is okay. I will give a little bit of the personal sort of homeowner perspective. And then John Hannah, who we retain for land use, will come speak to me about the legal side, which is not, you know, not my focus or expertise. So when I purchased the property, I was very aware of the conservation easement. There were, the lanes had sold it to a family report, there's some things, and maybe I shouldn't say names, but, you know, it was sold, and there were some complications in the process of getting it approved. So the real estate agents made really sure that I really knew what this conservation easement is. And then also from the very first meeting that we had with Dylan, you know, that was kind of the center of the whole discussion, because I was very interested. I've been a lifelong tennis player. So I was very interested in a property for that. And Dylan, at the time, told me, I can't tell you if a tennis court is okay or not okay. There's not a category, there's nothing in the easement that says yes or no. You have to show us the whole point. So I was like, gosh, that's, that's, that's an answer that's not very satisfactory, because you know, develop this whole plan and invest money, and then say no. And, but on the other hand, I appreciate not the sort of easy answer, but trying to stay true to what the purpose is of the easement, and that's how we looked at it. And so we came back with a plan, and, you know, he asked us to really, you know, provide the pickle and tennis courts into those flat areas that were already used for recreation. Same thing, he gave us some feedback on the pool, which is also recreation, which isn't part of here. So, and he checked with Laura Russell, who was the director at the time. And it was, a few months after I bought the property, you know, my neighbor, including Andy, said, you know, you know, you have to cut the grass down, right? I was like, oh, God, it's like 10 acres worth of grass, you know, what do I do? And how do I do it? And, you know, and so I said, yeah, this with a tractor is not that hard. So I looked at my conservation easement and said, no motorized vehicles off paved surfaces. I was like, well, a tractor is a motorized vehicle, what do I do? And so I went to Don Bull, Don Bull, the fire marshal, and asked him about, you know, what he thinks, like what trumps, you know, you know, in this case, how do we interpret some of these things, the intent of the easement and the actual thing? And he basically said, I think this is okay, because I'd rather have you do the whole thing than just the strips that are required. But I need to send it to Howard, the Public Works Director. And public, Howard took a while to get back, but eventually he said, I think this is okay, but I, you know, Laura has to decide. So I went to Laura Russell. And Laura finally, a week before July 4th, said, yes, you can use the tractor. So I was much relieved. And, but Laura, basically, from our perspective, was the decision maker, you know, other than the ASCC committee and you guys, but in terms of the staff, in terms of guiding us. And Dylan had written us back and said specifically, you know, this trail is okay, I ran it by Laura and so forth. So I guess what I want to share is that we've been trying to work very diligently on that hearing today. And it's been not an easy process. It's taken a lot of time, and, you know, Laura isn't there, then we have John, I don't know if we had someone else in between. So it's been kind of a long process. But I've really tried to, even though I didn't know the lanes, tried to understand the auditions and what's the overall intent for them. So and we got the conservation committee satisfied about responses. Valerie Amento, who had to step in because the primary attorney is conflicted. Someone else aged someone, the other from this end firm. So so it's been kind of a long road. And I think the intent, but John can talk more about it, is to, you know, the question was, why not put like a broader set of paths or allow it? Is to just keep it as minimal as possible to facilitate this project. So I'll turn it over to John, if you think. Or you can just be up for questions if you don't really need to say anything.
Can you hear me? Am I, am I, can you hear me now?
John, go ahead. We can hear you.
Yeah, okay, good, fine. The Bill and Mel Lane were really good friends of mine for years, campmates in Bohemia. Spent a lot of time with them. I know that this is as close to what they wanted and expected as you could get. And I think they're, they would be very pleased to know that someone who has proven himself as sensitive to the environmental issues here, as has Constantine, that they would be most gratified to know that. And the, what we wanted to do with this amendment, I think that even without the amendment, the staff was ready to, to recommend this, but there was a concern that there was somewhat of an ambiguity in the language that might prove to be troublesome if somebody wanted to challenge what was being approved here. And so there were minor changes made, principally to allow the recreational uses to be allowed to continue, even though they would change in nature from horseback riding and corral to tennis court and pickleball court. But the language was such that you might be able to make an argument that, well, that's not what was intended. And so the language was changed to specifically refer to the undisturbed or undeveloped portions of the land as not being subject to further recreational development. Similarly, with respect to the trails, the language about alteration of the surface of the land and grading and so forth was seen as something that somebody could say, well, if you put in a trail, you're altering the surface, and therefore you're violating the easement. Well, this just seems so contrary to to common sense, when you think about what a conservation means in terms of areas that are truly to be conserved, our public open spaces, parks and so forth, where it is perceived that it's actually a benefit to the environment, to the long-term sustainability of the open space, to keep people on trails rather than having them wandering all over wherever they they wish to go. And but at the same time, we wanted to make sure that the, the allowance of the trails here was, was very specific, was very limited, limited to exactly these three trails and limited as to the materials that could be used so that there would be no room for argument that we were somehow violating the, the idea, the concept of, of protecting the environment, conserving the environment by allowing trails. And so it's limited to these, these specific trails and to this specific type of improvement, which is the absolute minimum that you can, that you can, can do and is, is the standard for public lands and and, and other parks and so forth. So I think the staff has done a very commendable job of working this through. We think that the amendment is an improvement in that it's it will eliminate, we think, any potential controversy over what the intent of the conservation easement was and will be more specific in limiting the development, if you will, the use of this property to exactly what you see is what you get. And it's not going to open the door to some further changes unless it's something that is agreed to by both the town and whoever the owner is at the time. So that's all I have to say. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have no questions. Hey, John. The easement is made to the benefit of the town?
Yes, that's right. Yep, that's correct. Did you hear my answer?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
So on a on a basis of equal dignity, the town would be able to modify the easement as it is the easement holder. If the town wished to do so, am I, am I correct in that understanding?
I think it requires the approval, the joint approval of the owner and the town to amend the easement.
Under Section 14 Amendment of the Conservation Easement, it does say the town and the owners may jointly amend.
So, thank you. So I can have a I don't need to find fidelity if I don't want to. I can take actions for the benefit of the town. Or the town council could. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. I don't have any other questions.
Sorry, what does fidelity mean in that context?
I don't need to stay consistent with the terms of the easement because the town is the easement holder is in a position to make modification with the concurrence of the, of the property holder.
So in the amendment section, it does say, the only part of it that kind of mentions anything that is that the, any amendment shall be consistent with the purposes of the conservation. So that's the only part in that section that would need to be considered as part of the action.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, as the easement holder, I think that as I, I, I think that there's greater flexibility that is, is I, I don't believe you can actually bind yourself under under an equal dignity kind of theory. I, 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 beyond that, I'm going to get into discussion, I don't want to do that. Thanks for the purposes of disclosure and co-council on a completely unrelated dirty dirt matter with one of John's partners. So I don't view that as a conflict on any number of bases, but I did want to disclose that for purposes of transparency. But we are taking a public comment. And are the members of the community who would like to speak themselves, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and matters that should be considered.
There's a button, very subtle. In the world. All right. So my name is Andrew Thompson. I live at 840 Westridge Drive. I've lived there since 1993. The Lanes were neighbors, great friends, wonderful people. Bill came to me in 2005 and said he had something very serious to talk to me about related to his land that I look at directly, my, my view portal. And I thought, oh, mommy, he wants to build a house for him. And no, he said, he wanted to ask my permission to turn his property into a conservation easement. And he described what he wanted to do, which was to preserve the land, preserve the way the land was being used as it was. He assured me there would be no public access, it wouldn't be a park, it would be something that was being prepared and preserved for the town. I had one very specific ask for Bill, as my wife did, which was that if he did this, it would not be a vacant lot and that it would be, be able to be sold to a neighbor who would be able to use it in very similar ways into which the Lane family had used it, in which we come to know that we rode horses around their ring, we played games with them in their pool, we had lots of fun on their land. And Bill assured me that that indeed was in, completely his intent, that he wanted it to be used the way his family had used it. Okay, so now we have Constantine. I just want to emphasize, this man is a wonderful asset to our community. And if you know anything about what he's done to assimilate, assimilate himself into Portola Valley, to organize walks, to get to know his neighbors, to understand his community, he will be a fantastic asset in this town, and I really hope we do everything we can to keep him here. I also want to make a point about this foundation easement and how it's written. The Lanes were very, very wise people. I knew Bill very well. I used to call Bill the Lion of Westridge. Bill was, I miss Bill, never mind, we don't go into Bill too much. But he wrote into the conservation easement, this specific point, that the town and the owner can modify the easement. And he knew that when you write these very complicated documents, you often end up in situations where there's conflicting language and ambiguity, and even though lawyers are extremely clever, occasionally they get them wrong. And so that was a very, very wise point, in my view, with respect to how this is drafted, because, okay, here we are, with a very reasonable person, with what is a very reasonable request, that actually is lower density than the way the Lanes used the property. But there are some questions about, okay, what does it say on 4.1 and what does it say in
I don't know if you can hear me, but I've lost audio.
Okay, we can hear you, I'm sorry you can't hear me. Okay, sorry, I'll, I'll speak more directly into microphone, there we go. All right, so I think, look, that, that I think is why we have this question of can the town now tweak the ordinance of the conservation easement in a way that would ensure that this project can go ahead? There was a very good question, I, I think about, well, what is the term conservation value? And I'll go back to what Bill told me when he asked for permission to make a conservation easement. He wanted to keep his home and his land and his property used
I've lost audio.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, John, I don't know what I can do about that. So he wanted to keep the land used the way it had been largely historically. That was from the style of the house, single story, and then for recreational uses. And I, again, I'll point out that when we lived at 840, we do live at 840, and Bill was there, he had eight quarter horses wandering those meadows. They had go-karts running around. They had a swimming pool. They wanted a tennis court. I will tell you, they don't have one because we have one. We have one because the Lanes gave an exception to the previous owners of our property to have a tennis court that would actually go within their easement. So those people said, okay, Bill, you don't need a tennis court, you can come and play on our house. Okay, so what I want to really emphasize is the extent to which what is being proposed here is precisely what Bill and Gene intended. And most importantly, they were wise enough to give the town and the owner the power to make it possible. And I ask you very strongly to approve it and the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further comments? Are there comments online, please? Please facilitate that for us, please.
Yes. Phone number ending 7562, please speak.
Great, good evening, Caroline Brotton at 100 Thaumaly. I just have a question. I mean, I really liked this presentation and the reality of what has happened in history and, and the collaboration between neighbors. So thank you very much for the key speakers who come out and confirm this. We all want this. And so my question is, this amendment that you go to approve, is this for all property in the town? As you know, we have several projects who were exempt from CEQA and all kinds of other rules in Portola Valley, and now we're dealing with the consequences. I'm talking about rural commons, I'm talking, which I priorly, now we have Stanford. And I hope, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm trying to understand, is it just for this property? But there's several properties that have been approved by the planning department before that have not benefited the town. And perhaps you can give us a little bit clarity on this? And I hope if you approve this, that it will help all projects and then that the planning commission will provide us with the confidence and the confirmation that you're going to use this to protect conservation easements for the town. Thank you.
Mary Jack, if you'd like to speak?
Yes, thank you. With all due respect, Brandon, the impervious surface conversation has everything to do with recreational uses. It was not a part of the house and therefore not appealable. The information on the application is incorrect. The Lanes always lived within the Portola Valley Municipal Code, impervious surface. The riding ring is not a corral. If you look at the PVMC, the corrals could not be that large, they have a different flooring. It does not qualify as a corral. That was a previous planner's idea by which to suggest the exchangeability of recreation. I care most that this project have integrity, honesty and facts. It does not right now, and it needs to have that regardless of any decisions made by the council and others. Put all the cards on the table and call it what it is. Your land use and garage use is exactly the same as the Lanes had. The difference is the barn, which is the 2,500 square foot remaining in your square footage that you are able to build another structure or do other things with structure. But there's a difference between structure and land in this conservation easement, and it's really important. And I don't like that it has been disregarded and cared about. My com, my comment for, so please revisit that, somebody on the council, somebody in the town, get on it and let's get it right. Instead of having it be the illusion that the new applicant is so much more conservation minded than the original owner who's put this in place. I preface my remarks, this is not personal to my neighborliness, it's not about not liking change or a new neighbor. Constantine, you are so well-liked by this community. And we all agree that anyone in the town should be able to build a home that they would love to have as long as it's in the guidelines. But the qualities of personality of an applicant are the full array of options available to most applicants in Portola Valley is not what we're discussing tonight. We're addressing the fact that the applicant of this particular encumbered property wants to alter an important legally binding document to accommodate specific development that is not currently allowable for this conservation easement property. The conflict here is between the desires of the applicant and the words on the document. The applicant is convinced that his interpretation of the conservation easement and the creator's intentions for making it are in line and one in the same, and they are not. The conservation easement is not ambiguous or vague, it is clear and it is precise. The applicant has asked for supporting specifics and decisions that are made so far but has not lived up to the task. The town has not lived up to the task. That we are this late in the game and someone in the town has not spoken more about the legal implications of the, his choices is really sad, and I'm mostly sad for Constantine. Unlike Dorothy Ford Open Space, this conservation property is legally protected from misuse. The town has the ability, the agency to act on its own without outside interference to stand up for the property use via this easement document. And it is written and it is clearly represents the Lanes' intentions and their legacy. There can still be a whole bunch of fun had on this land. They wrote a document that says just what they wanted to have and not have happen, regardless of any future desires or interpretations. Please use the authority and wise overview that the town counts on you to exhibit when conflicts between people and property arise. The Lane Conservation Easement is worth standing up for as it is written. Please have the courage to say no to this amendment. Thank you.
There are no more hands raised. Both too soon? Tamara, Tamara, you, you can go ahead and speak now? Ms. Glatter?
Let's see, okay. Good evening, Chair Targ and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tamara Gallanter and I'm an attorney at Shute Mahaly in Weinberger. Here tonight, I'm on behalf of Mary and Rob Jack. I represented the Jacks since 2020, thus since before Catherine and Shute Mahaly became town attorney here, and that's why the town has outside counsel on this matter, really to avoid any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict of interest. I have been a partner and worked at Shute Mahaly for 35 years. And I have focused my practice on the protection and conservation of land. I've worked for, for land trusts throughout California, including the Peninsula Open Space Trust, which I've represented for more than 25 years. And I've also worked on conservation easements for the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. This morning, I sent you all a letter explaining This morning, I sent you all a letter explaining why this amendment should not move forward. First, as Mary just explained, it does not clarify ambiguous terms in the conservation easement or any ambiguous intent, because the conservation easement is clear. It protects all three of the merged lots on the property, and it prohibits the six thousand square feet of trails and the tennis and pickleball courts that the owner wants to allow under the conservation easement through the proposed amendment. All those improvements require grading and alteration of surfaces, which the conservation easement explicitly prohibits. As I also explained in my letter, the amendment is contrary to state conservation law, and because the lanes donated this easement, it violates federal tax law to now remove restrictions for which the lanes received a tax deduction. The amendment also violates section fourteen of the conservation easement, which sets out the requirements for any amendment to the conservation easement. Now, that provision doesn't just require an agreement between the town and the owner, as Brendan noted. It requires that the that the any amendment must be consistent with the purposes of the conservation easement, and that it cannot jeopardize the validity of the conservation easement or the town as the holder of the conservation easement. I think there was a really excellent question raised about, well, what are the conservation values? Because the purpose, of course, is not just to maintain the property predominantly in its current open space and natural condition. And what by current, what the conservation easement means is as it was when the lanes lived on the property and entered into this conservation easement. But it's also to protect those conservation values. And those aren't, that is not an ambiguous term at all. It is defined in recital E, which defines the conservation values specifically as wildlife, habitat, and scenic. So the wildlife and habitat values are primarily on that third parcel, but the scenic values and the impact on the other parcels can also impact wildlife, but specifically the scenic values and keeping the existing rural and open space nature of the property. And that's why the easement specifically designates what can be allowed and what cannot be allowed. So the amendment does not meet those requirements of protecting those conservation values. It does not meet the requirements of keeping it predominantly as it was, and it's contrary to the clear and very specific language in the conservation easement. As an easement holder, the town has an obligation to uphold the terms of the conservation easement. This isn't a typical contract where, you know, two parties can just amend it. The conservation easement requires much more. And in recital L, the town agrees by accepting the conservation easement to honor the attention of the owner stated herein and to preserve and protect in perpetuity the conservation values of the property. Likewise, paragraph five states that the town shall undertake all reasonable efforts to enforce both the rights granted to it and the restrictions imposed upon the property under this conservation easement in order to protect the conservation values of the property in perpetuity, meaning forever. In closing, I urge the planning commission to reject this amendment and recommend to the town council that it not approve the amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions about the letter I provided.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? The town's attorney is available if you have any questions for her.
So I guess the obvious for the town attorney is, is you think we're okay moving ahead with this or not?
I'll let her, I'll let her answer.
All right, that would be good.
So.
I asked her the same question this morning. That's why.
So the debate has continually been as to whether or not the language of the conservation easement is clear or not so clear. And in fact, there are provisions in the conservation easement that are not defined, and in some instances, some sections of the conservation easement seem to conflict with other sections. So for example, the conservation easement does not define what the significant impairment is, that that's that's not a term that's defined. The conservation easement does not address in any specific type of detail what is really meant by surface alteration, is raking leaves, surface alteration. There's there's no definition of to what degree any changes might be considered. The, what was I going to say? The recitals do say that they want to protect the wildlife, habitat, and scenic values of the property, but there's no additional explanation as to what those are. There's very clear history that they, the lanes wanted to merge the three parcels, as Brandon said at the outset of this, so that there would not be three driveways, three houses, and so forth. But at the same time, there was contemplation of putting a vineyard on lot one oh one. And a vineyard on lot one oh one would certainly have been an alteration of the terrain. So so there it's the the conservation easement, while well intentioned, is not as clear as the Jax would like you to believe it's it's clear. The the letter says that only passive recreational uses should be allowed. The term passive recreational uses does not appear in the conservation easement. The conservation easement says that there can be recreation. The area where the riding rink is, if you look at it, and unfortunately, I guess we do not have an actual picture of that, there's nothing that the average person would consider to be scenic about that area, nor is there any indication that it's really an area that promotes wildlife or any type of habitat. Typically, a conservation easement is put on a large tract of land. It's not put on a tract of land that's in the middle of a residential area. And, you know, it was a great idea at the time, and the lanes thought, obviously, that it was important, but it's not the type of conservation easement that you indicated she does or and has been involved with with entities like the Peninsula Open Space Trust or other land trusts. So there is a lot of discretion in terms of how the town wants to interpret some of the provisions of the conservation easement. And I think what's what's come before you does in fact require the town to make some determinations as to whether it thinks what is being proposed falls within the discretion of the town or not. Another example that I will give is that the conservation easement says that things need to be done in accordance with the rules and regulations of the town. Well, for example, the town has requirements for grading. Certain amounts of grading can be done without a site development permit. The grading that would be required for the courts, the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, do not fall within the code requirements for a site development permit. So is that significant or not? Does that count under the provisions of the conservation easement? These are all things that the planning commission and ultimately the town council need to evaluate. The, like, section three point five of the easement talks about avoiding damage to the scenic and natural character and says it prohibits the use or activity such as clearing, mining, grading, or storage of material that degrades or is likely to degrade the scenic or natural character. So that statement requires that a scenic and natural character pre-exist. Well, again, in the vicinity of the current riding area versus the pickleball and tennis courts, is there a scenic and natural character at that location? That's that's a question for the decision maker to to answer. So that's that's where the language of the easement is not this clear cut and dried situation as as is being presented by those who have criticized the proposal.
So if I can ask, let's say I want to put a water slide on the property. And let's say it's not a big ladder, so it gives me a super view of the conservation area. But the property owner and the town wants to do that, and we want to, as a town, amend the conservation easement so as to allow water slides. Is that a problem?
Well, I think the water slide issue would be somewhat different because the water slide would be an issue, I think, as to whether or not it was a structure and if it's governed by the provisions of the easement related to structures.
Because it's okay, let's say it's a structure. But my question is, if I wanted to do something clearly contrary to the original intent, if I am the town and the property owner, and if we're in alignment, can I simply modify the, it's a straight question of law, and I don't know the answer, is can I modify an easement by the easement holder and the property owner? I've got unity of of my entities here. I have a contrary term in the easement, and my question is, do I care as a matter of law? I mean, there's a whole question of, we're talking about moral backbone, and so we could go and revisit that. But I simply don't know the answer is, can I, as a town and as a property owner, simply modify the easement? And you need to think about that or come back at some point, that's that's fine, too.
So I.
It's a question of equal, my question is, is it an issue of equal dignity? I've got the parties who made the agreement. Can those parties get together and significantly modify the agreement? I don't know that this is determinative, but it's helpful in understanding the scope of where we are.
Okay, so again, there's section fourteen on the amendment says, first of all, would an amendment be an, would an amendment be appropriate? That's a that's a threshold issue. And then it says that the owner and the town may jointly amend the conservation easement provided that no amendment will affect the qualification of the easement or the status of the town under any applicable laws. And then it says about the amendment being in writing. But I think something like a water slide arguably is a very significant disruption to the scenic value because you have something that, you know, sticks up in the air and is.
That's totally my intention. I'm being offensive. So my question is, can I be offensive? Can I simply say that I've got, can the town relinquish its interest in the easement? And I, you know, again, it's a straight legal question, and I know that if it were an environmental rather than a conservation easement, I know what the answer is there, but I don't know if there's something special about a conservation easement that creates a issue. Maybe we don't need to reach the that particular issue, but I think that it may be important when the issue gets to council. I think that it might be other questions of the special council. Why don't we, why don't we bring it back? And we appreciate the public comment, and let's treat this as a matter of discussion and towards a resolution.
Chair Targ, I can mention that there are no further hands raised.
That's probably good. Given that we've just moved to discussion. But thank you. I'm going to start, John. How about you? What do you think?
I think it's okay. I think based on what I've heard, that we have the ability to make this judgment, based on my reading of of what's in there, not being a lawyer, of course, but in terms of what was the intent, what was going on, does this seem like a reasonable thing? The fact that there was, one of the things I had noted that I believe one of our speakers mentioned was that clearly there was a section written in about the ability to make some changes that would make sense moving forward. And I have run into issues where you can't do that. So I I look at that and I go, yeah, this, we were allowed to make changes, and they seem pretty reasonable. ASCC, you know, we're not commenting on on their stuff, but they're always pretty reasonable about thinking about things, and they're true. So that's, in my mind, that's, you know, that precludes us having to worry about their decisions. So, yeah, I could see myself. I, you raise an interesting legal question. I don't know if we can toss that up to maybe get some research on that on behalf of the town council before it comes to them, but I personally want to move forward with this resolution as is.
I think it may be, that's an interesting question. I want to know the answer to it for myself. The town may want to know the answer to it, but I'm not sure we need to reach it at this point.
We don't, okay, we could suggest, though, that maybe they get research for the town, or presumably somebody listening, and they'll pass that along.
So anyway, that's where my.
Can I ask a question, staff? And that is, the conservation committee has weighed in here. Is, do I understand that correctly?
That is correct. They weigh in not on the change to the, not on the change to the conservation easement, but on the entirety of the project. Thank you.
Yes, I understand that the ASCC basically approved the project, and it was their recommendation that we revise the conservation easement to take out any ambiguity, and I applaud them for that. I love it when things are more clear and not just relying on, well, the people at that time thought this or that. I also have written a lot of contracts, and no matter how hard you try, somebody comes up with a case in five or 10 years, and you're like, oh, never thought of that. So I, too, am very happy that the contract even contemplated this. So I, too, am very happy that the contract even contemplated this and said it could be amended. You know, I don't know the answer to the legal question you were asking, Nicholas, if we could just, if the town and the owner agree, just completely change it. But I'm applying the common sense rule. That would really not feel right to me, even if it's legal. To me, what makes sense is you can amend it if there's just some kind of minor questions about this allowed, that allowed, not change the whole thing. It's got to still be completely in the spirit of what you think the people meant to do at the time and what benefit they got for doing it. So this passes all the common sense tests for me and feels reasonable. And it also passes to the extent, me and all of us are the representatives of the town and negotiating on the town behalf, I feel like, no, this is what the town intended and the new uses fit for me as a resident in, you know, what the old uses were and the trading a horse. I don't even want to call it a word because I don't know my horse properties very well. But a place for horses and now a place for tennis, pickleball feels like a reasonable trade-off. And I'm, I'm okay with the trails. I, I agree with one of the comments that I'd kind of rather have trails rather than people just traipse everywhere, if they're, let me call them the natural kind of trails. So I'm happy with this amendment. It did surprise me that it's so specific, but if the town attorney wrote it that way, I'm gonna live with that.
Yeah, so I guess when I originally reviewed this, I thought it was gonna be fairly simple. But then today we got the objection from a neighbor and then now all these legal questions. I think I still come down on my original feeling about it, which is that it seems okay to me. I, I think that the trail is consistent with the original intent of conservation. I'm intrigued by the questions you brought up about the meaning of conservation. And if you have further discussion about that, I'd be interested. But just on the face of it, to me, it seems, it seems okay. And then the pickleball tennis courts on the previously developed area where the previous development was string or whatever the other term is, seems okay to me. Just, again, not, that, not necessarily, I guess, contemplating all the legal aspects, aspects about it. But just from this, from the standpoint of, you know, what, what, what it seemed like the intent of the conservation easement and, you know, what seems reasonable, I think it's okay. And then basically what I understood from the attorney, county attorney, is that there's enough ambiguity that we have discretion to kind of make a judgment here. And so I'm comfortable moving forward with that.
So I'm also inclined to both support the use and also to support the specific language. And I go to a couple of, a couple of ways of thinking. One is, I'm not a fan of water slides on this property. Notwithstanding what may be possible. And again, I'm interested, but I think it's academic in this case. There's a difference between open space values, conservation values, and preservation values. And if this were a straight preservation, I think that I might feel differently. If you go through and look at the baseline document with respect to the uses and to the trail use, for example, it talks about one of the values is being supported, is being a conservation value. And that is the value to be able to look at the conservation property. That would be consistent with the conservation value in my, in my mind. I think also, channelizing people along a particular path can have the same kind of, same kind of effect. And I think also, as the town attorney or special counsel raised, the question isn't complete fidelity, but is it inconsistent with? Does it do damage to the underlying values that are being promoted? One of the things that also the easement talks about is the social value of the property as well. So I don't find that I need to climb the ladder and make a splash. I think that it is consistent and think that the approach would be fine. It's a, there's fidelity in a contemporary use of the property for a new owner of the property. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I would move that we approve the resolution associated with the amendment to the conservation easement and the declaration of restrictions and components as written.
Second?
I'll second it.
To, to clarify, there is no resolution. This is just a recommendation to the council of their approval. So this will go to council for their approval.
So it's not a resolution for a recommendation of? Don't, don't, don't worry about it. We've, we've, we've got it on.
A motion is adequate.
Thank you. So can we do a roll call? Just, I think it's important to, this is a, this is a important issue.
Of course. Chair Targ?
Aye.
Vice Chair Brothers is absent. Commissioner Golden?
Aye.
Commissioner Kofsl?
Aye.
Commissioner Krasinski?
Yes.
Four zero. Four zero one.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. This is a interesting and useful. Discussion.
And it was unique? We had not seen this before.
We, we had not seen that. The issues that we have, the matters on the agenda, we have in my computer just from our juice, is reports from staff or from commissioners. Commissioners, do we have any?
Commission reports.
Reports.
Well, I, maybe can we revisit how we're gonna handle the Brothers memo? And I also wanted to note that she is on the Zoom call.
I don't want to handle, I think that we had her direction earlier today.
She, she indicated that she didn't have an adequate voice to fully participate, but she was gonna, was gonna watch, but she couldn't, she couldn't participate in the discussion.
Right, so we could still discuss.
Re-agendize the, the Brothers year colleague memo. In, in, in as, in as much as the author isn't here and I'm interested in what that did.
I guess it's just that some of the commissioners then will not be here, potentially. And if they had comments prepared, I'd be interested in hearing them. I wonder if we could cover it and then continue it? Is that possible?
Of course.
If, 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 if that's what my brothers and sisters would like to do.
Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't prepared to make comments till I hear more of the proposal and kind of ask questions of it.
Okay. I think that makes sense. I mean, clearly, clearly, to actually do anything, we'd have to have Linda around. It's not something that ended up really high on my list of something I was really concerned about. And I had to press that to Linda anyway in terms of, but more clarity is always a good thing. But so, didn't strike me, it's hugely controversial one way or another. I'd be happy to provide my comments if, if we move on and, and things are on. I'd be happy to provide my comments directly.
So you're dismissed from this if you promise to come back.
Not kidding.
Yes?
Yes, which?
Oh, yes, you're gonna come back?
I will serve until I'm replaced. Which probably covers it, but I don't know.
And, and kind of nodding.
I'll come in on that and then a later item.
So let's re-agendize this at our next meeting, please.
Yes, we'll do. Thank you.
Are there other report apps that we?
Ah, yes, so I've been serving as the liaison member to the ad hoc site evaluation committee. And we've had two meetings total and also since we met last. So the committee has broken out into subcommittees targeting three different regions within the town, looking at the sites that were originally collected by the outreach subcommittee from the town council, which was Huffdie and Hasko. And in our last meeting, we talked about site evaluation criteria. And we talked a little bit about potential schedule where I guess we're considering a worst-case timeline for our committee to make a recommendation by around May of next year. But hopefully, we'd be able to do it sooner than that, perhaps March. And so the, there were, there was a discussion in our meeting yesterday. I, I guess I should also note, our meeting yesterday, unfortunately, the wifi in this room was not working well. And so it was probably difficult to hear for a lot of the people on Zoom. And I'm not quite sure about the quality of the recording, but I think there was a recording, so hopefully some of it was captured there. So, so, so the sites discussed are a mixture, well, the sites that we have are a mixture of some that have consented to be part of the public discussion and others that have not. And so of the ones that have not, you know, there's ongoing attempts to contact owners and discuss it with them. But, you know, they may end up not ever coming to light and just sort of drop off the list. Also, within our list of original sites, there were sites that were currently in our housing element. So some of those are not really going to be considered further by our committees because I think they were in there just as like comparison points in terms of, you know, eventually we'll be ranking. So I'll, I'll mention the, the sites that were public and discussed. So for the subcommittee targeting the Nathorse area, well, they're, they're in generally a fairly preliminary stage. I think they've had some meeting with, among the subcommittees and they have started talking to both the building and landowners of the properties within Nathorse. And like I said, I think it's preliminary, but I think the discussions are around potential for mixed-use developments, adding housing to some of the existing properties there that may not have been explored as part of the housing element process previously. For the subcommittee focused on the town center and Portola Road, they, one of the sites that they're talking to is the Christ Church, which is currently in our housing element. But I think the intention there is that potentially in our current housing element, those units are above-market rate units and potentially they could be reclassified as low income, depending on the intention of, of Christ Church. And then also, I think the church may be interested in increasing the number. And then the other site that that subcommittee is looking at is the town center soccer field, together with the sheriff substation that's adjacent to it. And there's a memo about that in, in the packet from our meeting yesterday. And then for the subcommittee, which I'm on, which is Alpine, Los Trancos, and Skyline. One of the sites that we are looking at is 3350 Alpine Road, which is the property immediately across from the Ford Park current housing site in our housing element. And then the other property that we're looking at is on Skyline Road, the property that has the Fogarty Winery on it, where the interest may be to have agriculture, worker housing. And, yep, so the next steps are to continue those discussions and try to flesh out feasibility and like how many units the various sites may be interested in. And we're gonna have another meeting in two weeks, I think.
Well, I really appreciate that, that's super clear. And I recognize that you had zero warning that this was going to come up. So I appreciate your taking the time and walking us through the progress.
Yeah, especially good since the recording might not be very good for us to listen to ourselves. And can I just clarify? The goal by March or May is to come up with a recommendation to town council for sites that will add up to 50 low-cost units in order to replace Ford Park. Is that right?
That, that's basically the goal, yes. I, I think that's at least approximately right. I mean, I think that there could be other possibilities, like recommending, if we find a site that, or site or sites that are fewer than 50 units, maybe lowering the density on Dorothy Ford Field. But at least, yeah, yeah, that is basically correct. Planning director was also in the meeting. And if you want to add anything, please jump in.
I thought your summary was excellent, much better than the recording. I don't have, I don't have anything to add, except that I, I, I do agree that's the primary focus of the, of the, of the, of the project is to find a replacement for that.
So the, right, the goal, the committee would make that recommendation to the town council, then the town council would then take it from there in terms of initiating the process if they so determined to revise the housing element, probably come before the planning commission again, perhaps recirculate the environmental analysis and resubmit to HCD.
Yes, okay, good.
Are there other reports that commissioners wish to make? Other staff reports?
Yes, I'd like to point out for commissioners and the, and the public in general that the, the application period to serve on the, on the planning commission and the ASCC, there are a number of openings. And the, the, the application period is open. So, and you, people need to indicate their interest in the, in, in serving on one of those committees, including existing members, by the 13th of December. So that's by next Friday. Just, and, and all you have to do is, in one way or the other, let, let me know and I'll, and I'll, I'll correlate that. And they'll be arranging an interview with the, with the town council. So, and I'd wanted to clarify one thing, which I, which I think I'd said in the past. Commissions, planning commission and ASCC don't actually serve until they're replaced. until they're replaced. They, the terms actually, it's the, the committees do serve until replaced. But the, and I think I may have misspoken about that in the past. So this reminds me that in fact, your, when your term expires, it expires. So if your term expires in December, then you're, you're, you're off at the end of December. However, of course, you can apply, you can apply for reappointment. And I think you're being encouraged to do so.
I'm not, I'm not going anywhere. This thing gets so tread on my.
So I, I don't, I don't have anything further to add. If I just wanted to make sure that the public and the commissioners were aware of the, of that opportunity.
Are you able to say if you've had a flood of applications?
I, I have one application so far.
And Terrence, is there any update on our response to HCD? Last I remember, we were expecting the planning commission to need to work on some more details about it, but we were waiting for the town council to review it and maybe give us direction.
Certainly. The, the, we were required to respond to the, to the HCD's euphemistically called technical assistance memo, which is actually requirements that we're, we're intended to, to comply with. So, and we did in fact respond in, in line with what was presented to the town council, which was a basic, a simple, direct statement that we were going to comply with their, with their efforts, but that laid out the difficulties we had, which is to, one of the, the Dorothy Ford site is a larger parcel. So a smaller parcel that corresponds to the housing element site would need to be created before rezoning could occur. So it'd be, it would be coming, we're working on the staff work on that right now. It'd be coming to this, to this commission for, for approval of a subdivision, a lot split, actually, not a subdivision, a lot split to create that parcel. And then it would, and at the same time to rezone the parcel to be consistent with the housing element. So, and then that would go, if, if approved by the planning commission, I mean, it would go to the, to the town council for their approval. So that, that's the next step to, to comply. So our letter told them what we were planning to do and that which was to meet their, to meet their goals. We'd like to get the, we were willing to, to meet their goals while we work on replacement site. And if, when, if and when another site is, is made, the zoning could be returned to its open space as it was.
That sounds good.
And the letter, if you're, you're interested in my very brief letter, it's, it's up on our website. So I had a, it was a three page letter, but I took out all the snarky comments and it was down to one.
But we'd like to read the snarky version.
Yeah, yeah. I deleted it. I'm sorry. Excellent.
So at this point, we should.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Yes. Are, are you expecting that we'll meet on December 18?
There are no, there are no items queued up at this, at this point. We can, if there's interest, we can, I'll, I can let you know toward the end of this week whether that's coming.
Why don't we see if we can't schedule ourselves for the 18th?
Get the off.
Then also include a Commissioner Brothers Dear Colleagues memo, which has been pending for.
A while.
That, that, that's, that's a good plan. So we will meet and even if that's your only item. Got it.
Terrence, I have a question too. So did I read the memo regarding the Form 700s? So even outgoing commissioners have to fill out the, send Form 700 for next year?
There's a box, there's a box that you check that says leaving office.
Okay.
There's different types of reports. There's entering office, annual and leaving office.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood.
And I believe, and, and the interim town clerk can walk you through that, that process. And I think get, and send you to a link. It's, it's an online process now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've always done it online. So.
Good.
Are there questions or comments from the public? You should go in if you can facilitate that for us.
Hi, this is, this is Rita. Ronnie, I want to thank you for your summary of the meeting from last night. It was, it was hard, it was horribly garbled. And then when you spoke, you were just completely muted. And I know you were probably saying something really profound. And I, I really hope that the department writes up a nice summary of that meeting because you would not be able to gather any information from, from the recording. And, and I tell you, I, I had, I was listening to the whole thing and I'd get, you know, catches of partial words here and there, but it, it never came around. And I, I hope you do meet on the 18th of this month. But just in case you don't, I just want to personally thank the volunteers that are timing off from the planning commission for your volunteerism for our beautiful town. And, you know, and I, I'm sure we will still see you around. And I, and I hope that you still keep a, keep a toe in what's going on in town because we've got lots of work to be done. And we, we need the residents to be engaged and you guys have a lot of information. So thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other hands raised.
Could I comment on that quickly? One thing that happened on, is that okay?
Go for it.
One thing that happened on the Zoom was that I was logged in on my phone. And so it said my name because I was logged in. But I think many times my name would show up on the screen and people thought that I was speaking, but it might not have been me that was speaking. You may have not been able to hear someone else that was speaking. That's it.
On the other hand, it may have been also very profound.
Yes.
So take the magic eight ball and see what we've got.
You, you have a comment letter that raises a question about the minutes that refers to whether it's tree number 14 or tree number 12. I, I'd prefer to review the tape and be able to correct that instead of relying directly on.
I review it.
Oh, and?
The, so on the recording, Dana said tree number 14. Now, that may have been a mistake, but I think, I think it's okay to leave it in, in the minutes as 14 because that's what Dana said.
Absolutely. It should, it should record what was said, even if it was an error. So given that update, you, you do have a minute, you do have minutes to, to consider. And there, there were comments provided, but with the exception of comment two, which was just discussed, you, you could, you could make the, you could make a motion to approve the minutes with the, with the changes that are indicated in your comment letter, which is page two of 15, of 15 packet that we, that we think we.
Are there additional modifications to the minutes?
Yeah, I do have more comments. On page 158, where it says the commission voted four to one, that should be three to one because Commissioner Kofstil was absent. And then there, there are three instances where Ben Malka's last name is wrong, two on page 159 where it says Malcolm, Ben Malcolm, and then one on page 161 where it says Ben Walker. So all three of those should be Malka, M-A-L-K-A. On page 164, there are two instances of appellants architect. That should be the applicants regarding the public comment, I guess I would also propose a change related to the number four from the public comment. And the change would be on page 163 to add to the end of the appellants paragraph, the sentence, the, the appellant considers the tennis court setback and geologic issues to be unresolved. Knows it.
Yeah, I just have, you know what, I'm using the latest package. So my numbers are a little different than Ronnie's. I think it had Linda's memo in there. But on my copy, it's labeled page 166. I think it's six of the minutes. Like Ronnie did tonight, he gave a report on the site evaluation committee and he named some members that are on it. And the recording had to try to use his, just listening to them. So it has their names all wrong. Just feel better to me if those got, since they're known names, they're the people on those committees.
So the recommendation is to?
Write their names correctly since we know who the people are. You know, sometimes you're talking about somebody and we aren't familiar with that person. So we all have to guess, but we all know who these people are because they're on that committee. I just feel like it would be nicer to have their names spelled.
Your, your page number is consistent with mine.
Oh, it is page 166?
Yeah. I mean, that's where your, mine, my comments were on the early pages.
I, I have, I have nothing. But we may have comments we, from the public.
There are, there are no hands raised.
In that case, we are closing that hearing and looking for a motion.
I move to approve the minutes for November 6th with the changes noted.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
On the topic of public comments, we're still missing, I think, three meetings. Are those going to be brought to us again?
Yes, we're working on them.
But, okay, but you already had them in the meeting that was canceled.
Maybe we're going to deal with that on the 18th.
We'll bring them back.
Actually, we should, we should, we should address this on the 18th to the extent that we're going to have people rotating off. With that, we wish Commissioner Brothers well and a speedy recovery. And I'm going to arrogate the, the authority and follow any day.
All right.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, great.